It is 5:03 PM. It is Tuesday, March 16th, and I'm going to call this special city council meeting to order with the city secretary. Please call the roll.
Mitchell?
Here.
Coach?
Here.
Rachel?
Here.
Forrest Kill?
Here.
Ellison?
Present.
All right, six members present. We have a quorum at this time. Next up, citizen comments period. Is there anyone registered online who wishes to register an opinion? Seeing none in the audience, I'm going to go ahead and close. Citizen's comments period is now closed. Next up, executive session.
Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the city council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. The city council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including any or all of the following topics: pending or contemplated litigation, or to seek advice of the city attorney pursuant to Section 551.071, Case 521-CV00237-JKP, RBF, John David Ferrara versus Jeffrey Blake Barnett, and the City of Kyle in the United States District Court for the Western District of Texas, San Antonio Division, Milestone Development, D.R. Horton Development, Button Lane, City Lights and Kyle Marketplace subdivision development, TML claims, cause number 1914921200, South Old Stagecoach Road LLC versus City of Kyle pending in the 22nd Judicial District Court of Hayes County, Texas. Third amendment to the development agreement between the City of Kyle, Texas and Clayton Properties Group Incorporated (DBA) Braun Homes, and amendment to the development agreement between the City of Kyle and Clayton Properties Group Incorporated (DBA) Braun Homes, an agreement regarding proposed sign application, and convene into executive session pursuant to Section 551.087 Texas Government Code to deliberate regarding the offer of economic incentives to one or more business prospects that the city seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in near, in or near the city. Project Big Red, project Val, this is a movie, I don't know how to say it though, Valkyrie? That's my best stat at it. Anyways, that's all.
All right, we're in executive session. Action taken during executive session. There will be no action taken now. Next up, agenda item number four, approval letter agreement confirming Roxy Stevens of Dent Navarro as the attorney assigned to cause number 191492, 12 South Old Stagecoach Road. Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilman Rizzo. Is there any discussion on the motion? You think we're good? Scott? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilman Rizzo. We are adjourned. All right, I'm going to give 60 seconds, and so we're going to switch over. Good evening. The time is 7:09 PM. It is Tuesday, March 16th, and I'm going to call this regular city council meeting to order. Would all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for
With the city secretary, please call the roll. Here.
Coach? Coach? Ellison?
Present.
Forrest Kill?
Here.
Rizzo?
Present.
Rachel?
Here.
Tobias?
Here.
All right, six members present. We have a quorum. Next up, approval of the minutes.
Mayor, motion to approve meeting minutes for March 2nd and special meeting minutes for March 2nd.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Ellison, seconded by Councilman Tobias, that we approve the minutes for March 2nd. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries six to zero. Next up, citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item, please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to mayor and council. We also ask that you fill out a public citizen comment form and submit it to either myself or the city secretary. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak? Seeing none, is there anyone who's registered online who is available to speak?
Yes, sir.
All right, go ahead. Please state your name for the record.
Yes. I'm registered to speak.
Go ahead, sir.
My name is Dr. Glenn David Harlston, and this is regards to Jeff Blake Barnett, the son of Jeff Blake Barnett, chief of police. Yesterday was the March 15th, the Ides of March. It was Jeff Blake Barnett's birthday, the son of police chief Jeff Barnett. Your police chief Jeff Barnett, an internal investigation done in 2012 by your sitting manager, Earp, denied the existence of his own child. Judas denied Christ. That was something. But Jeff Barnett denied any knowledge of the Son. Now that's just evil. Barnett knew all along it was his son because he had conducted a DNA test well before Earp's investigation, and that DNA test has a date showing it's a year before Earp's investigation. Little Jeff lives in a home with a hole in its roof, no air conditioning, no heat, in Princeton where Barnett abandoned him years ago, along with his mistress, and has never paid one penny of support to his son. That's immoral, and it's also criminal. He lied to her to sleep with her and manipulated her and several other women in Princeton, including a young teenage girl. When Officer Brandon Kilpatrick of Princeton, where Barnett was chief, turned him in for his misconduct in which he would pull over a young woman, instead of picking them, he would give them his number and called them in the middle of the night to conduct his immoral and criminal affairs. A very concerned mother, concerned for her teenage daughter, contacted Officer Brandon Kilpatrick, who worked for Barnett, and Brandon did what any good officer would do. He made a difficult decision and turned his chief in for misconduct, Jeff Barnett. What did Barnett do? He fired Kilpatrick, gave him a dishonorable discharge without listing a single reason. After Barnett had lied in a city investigation and kept his city cellphone records from being used as evidence by listing these young girls as informants, denied access to his call logs, making it impossible for Officer Kilpatrick to prove his allegations. But years later, under protest from the city, I got those records, and it shows clearly what Brandon knew all along, that his chief of police, Jeff Barnett, was a sexual predator with a badge that gave him the authority to do whatever he pleased. Sounds familiar, doesn't it? Sergeant Jesse Espinoza turned in his police chief, Jeff Barnett, to your sitting manager, Earp, for lying during the 10-question true-false five-minute investigation of Chief Barnett by Earp, in which he denied knowing anything about a child that might have resulted in a relationship with a married woman, which he continued while chief in Kyle. What happened, Officer Espinoza? Earp ordered an eight-hour.
Thank you, Mr. Harlston. Your three minutes are up. Do we have anyone else who wishes to speak or who is registered? All right, is there any objection? I'm going to go ahead and close citizen comments. Citizen comments is now closed. Thank you. All right, next up, agenda item number four, presentation, Texas Municipal Library Directors Association Achievement and Excellence Award, Mr. Paul Phelan.
Okay, good evening, mayor and council. It's my privilege to report to you all tonight that the Kyle Public Library has been awarded the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association Achievement of Excellence in Libraries Award for 2020. This is the fifth consecutive year that the library has achieved this, and basically we're one of 56 library systems that qualified for it. And probably this year, there was some folks that had a harder time meeting the criteria because, of course, being closed and so forth and not doing that is a little hard to do it. In order to qualify for the award, there are 10 criteria, and I could just kind of briefly run through them, services to underserved populations, an enhanced service in the past year, innovative and effective current marketing materials, cultural, topical, and educational programming for adults and families, literacy support for all ages, summer reading club, which of course, we had a big one last year in spite of being closed, collaborative efforts is, of course, that we do, workforce development support, digital inclusion, and professional staff training. So we met all that criteria in all those areas, and we're able to do this. Now, just to give you some sense, because I know we were closed last year, so you would think, well, you know, if the library's closed, or at least in part, that, you know, you wouldn't have that much traffic. But we still had 70,000 people come through the door. Now, part of that was, of course, when we were open early on, but we continued to serve the public. So there was not a day that went by that we weren't open to the public. So for example, during that first time when the facility was closed, that Monday, or whatever that next day was, I'm thinking it was a Monday, but we had our, we have an external window, and so that day, we implemented the service of, you just call in, we go get your books for you, we put them there, and then you come pick them up. So at that, so there was never a time that the citizens of Kyle were unable to come check out a book at the library during this. We still circulate about 131,648 items, and interestingly, about 19,500, so 19,000-plus were e-circulation. So we're talking databases, different things like that, eBooks and all that, so promoting those pretty heavily. We had three nice additions last year to our library. Of course, we put Linda.com, which has been a real big hit, and that was, of course, came about around budget time last year. We're very excited. Got our new RFID system, security system and self-checkout. We got that put in. And of course, we're our new computers. So you all funded $61,000 worth of new computers last year that we put in. So we really got some very nice additions on the technology side, and we're still working on getting some more of those things in place. Right now, so just to give you a sense of where we're at, and we've been, you know, pretty much, now, we are open to the public, but our programming has been shut down. It's transitioned to a digital format. Year-to-date, we've, we're doing about, we're up close to about 60 programs that we've done digitally, and we're probably getting close to about 6,000 participants. It's about 5,500 the last time I checked, but, you know, each day that goes up. And some of those things that we did online, science discovery for young adults, Los Cuantos, which was a dual-language storytime, of course, our storytimes, Dungeons and Dragons, our book club, we had a nice online job search program that we did last year where people would send in their information, and Jesus would work with other staff and actually kind of give them a strategy to go out there and search for a job. And that came about right as the pandemic was hitting. So that was a really good, good program. And currently, I would say before, because we have something coming up tomorrow, that we have a Currently Grow with Google series, so tomorrow it is make your website work for you, learn how to create a search-friendly website, or spruce up your old one. So the bottom line is with this is to learn how to utilize your webpage to grow your business. And the thing about this is, you don't really have to be, what I'm told is, everybody can get something out of this. So perhaps you're a small business owner that has a very simple webpage, you could attend this thing tomorrow and/or, you know, someone that has a little bit more experience and maybe looking for ways to get in there and do more to that. So if you are interested in that, if anybody is, you can email Jesus@JHernandez@CityOfKyle.com. And I believe we got two online classes, March 17th and March 18th. So we're talking tomorrow and the next day at 11:00 AM. But if you get on there and email him, he can help you out with that. And it's been a very popular program, so I'd encourage you to do it. And this is what it looks like, right there. So we're awfully happy about that. And that's all I've got for you. If you have any questions, I can certainly do my best to answer them.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions for Mr. Phelan or comments? Councilman Rizzo?
Ellison was first.
Councilman Ellison.
Oh, certainly. Thank you, Councilmember Rizzo. I just wanted to say a few remarks here. First of all, much deserved, well-deserved award, and thank you for presenting on it. I know we did a social media post about it, but thank you, Paul, for coming and presenting about it and sharing a little bit more of how that reward is approved and how we were able to obtain it. One thing I'd like to say is, a lot goes unnoticed about what our library staff does. Paul mentioned a number of different programs, which I was certainly appreciative for him giving that recap, certainly the training programs and such other things like that to help colleges improve their skill sets, to improve their quality of life and income earning potential. All those things are services that are sometimes forgotten about and overlooked, but when your local library can provide that service, that is a unique thing. But I wanted to also talk about the various different things that, just recognize for a moment what our library staff has done, whether that's being flexible and helping out other departments throughout the pandemic, helping out with the phones and different things when we've had high call volumes, and just willing to be flexible and help out Team Call in any way they can, even if it's beyond what the library does. And so, Paul, I'd just like to say thank you to you and to the extension of your team for having such a, people that are always willing to be team players and help out any way they can. I want to also personally thank them for their assistance, particularly last month when we had the Black History Month and we had proven on that and making that even better. But I just want to say my gratitude and appreciation for willing to work so well with bringing that on, but also willing to work with our residents, that idea was, came from our residents. And so, I'd like to grow and build upon that and make that even better and continue to improve those relationships between our library and our residential community, and certainly appreciate the staff's willingness to always do that. But y'all know I'm a big fan of the group at the library, love the adaptation that y'all have had through the pandemic and continue to provide programming and content for our residents to enjoy. So thank you, Paul, and your team.
Let me just say thank you for that. And also, keep in mind that Councilman Ellison came down and read some stories for Black History Month. We had some staff and some residents, and those are still on Facebook, and they're excellent stories. So if you get a chance and you haven't seen that yet, just go to our Facebook page and go down a little bit, and you can see some really entertaining things there. So I'd encourage you to do that.
Councilman Rizzo, go ahead.
Well, Paul, just wanted to, I guess, add to what Councilman Ellison said, and that's really follow-up on the pandemic, the great job you and your team did during the pandemic, even in the early onset of it, being able to adapt and overcome, still giving people that chance to check books out and do it in a safe environment for your staff and for them as well was well-planned, and it goes back to the leadership and your staff. So it was something that was much needed when people were isolated in their homes, and for you to keep that function running, it just shows on how the city was able to better everybody during a pandemic, and that goes back to everybody in staff. Everyone that works for the city has done a great job, and your library staff did an amazing job. So thank you for all y'all do for our city.
Thank you, Councilman. If I could just reiterate what you said, I'm extraordinarily proud of my staff, and, you know, and not only just for their willingness to work and to do these things, but for them to bring their creativity to the table. Because when we shut down all of our programs, and there's nobody coming in, you know, all of a sudden, you're sitting here going, what are we going to do? But just immediately, they began to say, let's start, you know, do some digital formats and put things online and doing different things like that. Started working with the communications department, Samantha and Grant, and that's led to a relationship. We're going to start producing some content for the channel, with the Butterfly Garden for different things like that, and I look forward to that. So to utilize that cooperation there with them. But anyway, just again, if my staff's watching, just to let them know I'm very proud of their efforts this year.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Paul. Okay, thanks. Well-deserved. All right, next up, CIP Road Projects and Consent Agenda Presentation. Go ahead, Leah.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Barbara, city engineer. I've got quite a few items on the agenda for the consent, so I'll try to push it as fast as I can. We have trouble loading the forums. These two stay on our list of projects that we need to finalize out. Just to let you know, Lehman Road, we're waiting for the contractor to give us our as-built. We're not finalizing the project till we get our as-built plans from the contractor. That means that those are the engineering drawings that were prepared originally, and where there's been modifications, we expect those modifications to be drawn on those plans so that we can have a good set of as-built as we need those in the future. Again, we're sitting on the retainage until we get those as-built. Same is true for Brodson Street. We do need as-built, but there are a couple of items, outstanding items on a punch list that we need to work out with them. There's ADA issue on a couple of parking spaces, so we're trying to figure out what the best solution is, and the contractor's working with us on that. So we're still working on that particular issue. I don't know if y'all have noticed, but there was some damage on our railing there by the church, so our contractor's not going to be responsible for that, but we'll have to try to figure out how to get that repaired. Public Works is looking into making some repairs there, so we can try to get that fixed up again. The Wendy Hill Street and Drainage Project, we're at 41% complete. They're still working on the south half of Wendy Hill Road. We are still going to have some side street intermittent closures there at Indian Paintbrush and Cherrywood up until about May 21. As you may have noticed before, we were installing culverts, and then we'll have to come back and do some paving, some final street repairs. Indian Paintbrush is open today, and Cherrywood is still closed. This is a good picture showing you, they, right now, they're planning to put the base in or the gravel in, starting, going to the west from the Dollar General there. So once they get that all in, they're going to head and start putting oil on that so we can go ahead and get it paved. So they're moving along fairly quickly on that project. Southside wastewater improvements, we didn't see a lot of activity from the contractor. We're asking him to try to get moving a little bit faster on the project. He still has some work to do on the paving. I think he's waiting for a manhole that goes on the west side of the I-35, and we're also waiting to get that wet well and that manhole coated so we can possibly start using those facilities. I think we skipped a slide. I'm sorry. I just wanted to point out one thing to you on that slide, I'm sorry, Kathy, on that slide. If you'll notice on the bottom right, you can see all that pipe that's there, that's the Elliott Branch Project. I didn't provide a report yet because they've just barely started a couple of weeks ago, so they're just trying to mobilize right now. Almost on the right side, about the dead center, there's a manhole there that needs to go in, one I mentioned earlier. And once that's completed, then that's where they're going to pick up the project and start the Elliott Branch Project. If you notice there, there's your purple pipe, that's for the reclaimed water line, that's our green pipe for the wastewater line that's there in stockpile, ready to go in. So that project's ready to kick off and hopefully start moving pretty quickly, and I'll bring you reports on that as they start picking up also. Okay, Kathy, next one. Thank you. The treatment plant's still moving on very well. We're at 45% complete. They're backfilling around the listation. The contractor is working Saturdays, so he can catch up on some of his lost time because of the weather. We have a dewatering design that's being worked on. We should have it completed in April, at least 90% completed in April. We don't expect to see any changes in the construction progress of the plant itself. We do expect to have this project completed in March of 2022. The one thing they may continue after this, of course, would be the dewatering or that facility, but that's not really impacting the actual completion of the plant. And you can see it's quite a bit of concrete work that's been done, a lot of activity there. You see the operations building starting to go up there, so that's a lot of good activity there on that project. Button Creek Interceptor, on the far background, that's our treatment plant back there, and this is a Button Creek Interceptor. It's going to be tying into the plant in that area. The contractor for the treatment plant is actually going to connect to the wastewater line pipe that we put there, so that's how we plan the project to go. But this contractor is just barely starting in there, and it's a pretty interesting picture you see. You see the fields being ready for crops, and then on the left is another development that's being talked about. So everybody's looking at getting this line in so they can start using this line. On the Well 4 Elevated Storage Tank, they've already got the tank, starting to fill the tank. It is complete, but there's still a punch list that we need to do on this particular plant, on this, I'm sorry, on this storage tank. We're also waiting for the contractor to give us a proposal for doing some additional work at the downtown elevated, and so we're asking him to give us some cost estimates of what he thinks it would take to do some adjustments to the logo and possible, and remove also an overfill spout that we have there on that downtown elevated tank. So we haven't closed the contract yet. We're waiting to see what that change order would be so we can consider it and decide if we want to move forward with that additional work at the downtown elevated tank. This is Old Post Road. As you can see, the county's been working on this road pretty, for, what, since March, beginning of March. I can't tell you how much they've completed since we're not getting a pay estimate from them, but it's, I'd say it's roughly 10%, 10%, 15% right now, what they've done. Ran into a couple of utility issues, but we're working through those. I think we'll be able to resolve those quickly, but they're getting ready to maybe start getting down to what we call subgrade, where they come back and start putting base in, hopefully in about two to three weeks. This is a Cessna Ranch Roundabout. We're still about 95% complete. We understand that there's a plan in the making on the improvements that will be done in the median, and I'm thinking this will include removing that stand-up curb, replacing it with what we call a lay-down curb or rollover curb, and then adding about nine and a half feet of concrete structure behind it to, that allows the vehicles, the heavy trucks to go right over that section. Paramount Subdivision, they're about 70% complete, and I left the three to four weeks of time on there because they're still working on the, they still have a ways to go, in my opinion, but they gave me this number of three to four weeks about two weeks ago, so I said, well, I still think they have another three to four weeks to go. So I left that at three to four weeks before they finish, before they finish that and move over to Roland Lane. On the consent agenda items, I'm going to talk a little bit about consent agenda item number eight. This is task order number one. We're recommending approval of this task order to CPNY Engineering. What we're going to do is go to TCEQ and request an amendment to our discharge permit that we have at the treatment plant today. Right now, we're permitted up to four and a half million gallons per day. We are currently at three million gallons per day, but the current work that we're doing now is going to take us up to four and a half million gallons per day. That's what our permit allows us. So what we're planning to do is to go back to TCEQ as quickly as we can and try to get them to approve, at least allowing us up to nine MGD. Obviously, we're going to ask for more, but we're hoping that we get at least nine MGD. The reason that nine MGD is so important is right now, the plant that's being built, the improvements that we're doing, we have designed it to where we can add up to nine MGD on the inflow of the plant. So that's the reason that we want to try to get at least nine MGD so we can get that permitted for the future growth. On consent agenda item number nine, CPNY is the engineering, this one again. On Consent Agenda Item Number Nine, CPNY is the engineer in this one again. We have asked them to look at our City of Kyle Transportation Master Plan. We've asked them to look at not only the other plans from adjacent entities such as Buta and San Marcos and other cities, but we want to make sure that we coincide with what they're recommending. I know there's differences in what we think, for example, in Heidenreich. We have a different requirement for right-of-way in Heidenreich than the county does, and I think the same thing is true on Wendy Hill. So we'd like to make sure that we coordinate with the adjacent entities and make sure that we're all in the same ballpark. Also, we know where a lot of our new development's going now, so we have better information than we did five, six years ago. So we're going to take that information and make sure that we're properly sized those roads from that original master plan, where maybe we don't need three lanes now, maybe we need four lanes. So we want to make sure that that development that we see coming in is going to be the right, we have the right traffic lanes that are there to take care of that future traffic. And there may be other areas where we need to maybe add more new roads, so that's what this study will do for us. Number 10, this was not a surprise. This is something that was mandated by the federal government. They wanted us to prepare a risk and resilience assessment and update our emergency response plan. The due date for that is, for the risk and resilience assessment is June 30. So we have a few months to get that ready and wrapped up. Then we also have to have the emergency response plan done by December 31, so we have a little bit of time on that. But again, this was federally mandated, so we've asked CPNY to prepare this information for us. If you think of this as more, I'm sure some of you have heard of a SWOT analysis where you do, you look at your strengths, your weaknesses, and your, what else does SWOT stand for? It stands for Opportunities and Threats. So that's why I consider it kind of a SWOT process. So we need to look at our strengths and weaknesses in our water system, and this is what we're doing with this particular study. This is a very good drainage project that we're going to be looking at. This is actually just a preliminary engineering report. We're going to be looking at the basin around the Sledge Street and Scott Street area. There's several projects that are listed in our Drainage Master Plan, and we're hoping this preliminary study will give us a good idea of some cost estimates, some solutions, and then once we get that report in, then we'll be able to pick and choose and see what we can afford to do this first round of projects. We're going to be looking, the primary goal of this one is to improve that culvert there at Sledge Street, but there are other issues around there that we needed to look at, and this preliminary engineering report gives us a good look at the drainage basin in that Another good drainage project, this is a Quell Ridge Drainage Improvement. Pape Dawson's going to be the engineer on this particular one. We have an agreement with LaSalle that we need to provide a BERM adjacent to their project, and so that's what the focus of this report will be. But we will also be looking at the rest of the Quell Ridge subdivision to see what kind of recommendations we can come up and what kind of solutions we can come up with and what kind of costs we're looking at. Item 13 is a reclaimed water master plan. Cobb Finley and Associates is the engineer for this particular project. We have sections of the projects that we've done where we already installed reclaimed water lines, the purple pipe, but we really didn't have a plan as to, do we need other places to store some of the water that we pump? What about our pumps? Where are we going to need to put our pumps? How big do those pumps need to be? How much of a storage facility do we need? And more importantly, what are we going to charge for this? So this is a good master plan that we need to complete and have done, and it's a good direction for us to create our third utility. And I'm ready for questions.
Thank you, Leon. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Barbara, Councilor Rosa?
Yes, Leon. We go back to the Sledge Street slide real quick, and we're talking about improvements in that area. I just want to keep you, make you aware that if you follow that drainage system back to Hayes Street, there's an area there that's retaining quite a bit of water, and the residents have asked if we could do something as a city in that area because of the mosquito problem there that it's making. But if we could go back, it's right where the dirt part of that drainage hits the concrete that's back behind the library. There's a concrete section that starts, so just that area, just before that's about, I want to say maybe 50 feet long, maybe a little bit longer, is the area they're talking about.
I think I know where you're talking about. Yes, sir.
That sounds good. And then I want to go back to the Casetta Ranch and just, you know, remind you all that there's a lighting issue there, and we're all working on it, but I want the residents to be aware that we've seen the need for some lights there, and we're going to do our best as a city to see where we can come up with a plan to address that.
Yes, Councilmember Harper and I are going to be working on that pretty hard.
Thank you. Thank you, Leon.
Thank you, Leon. Thank you, Councilor Rosa. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Barbara or questions about Consent Agenda Items? I, for one, am excited about the reclaimed water master plan. That's one that I think has got a lot of potential because, like what Leon said, it's the creation of a third utility. And with this upgrade of our wastewater treatment plant, we're finally going to, I think, get to the point where we can start actually delivering reclaimed water for value to the city as well as having a big economic or an environmental benefit to using reclaimed water. So it'll be very exciting to see this plan come forward. Do we know if this plan is intending to take into account all the different possible projects? Are they going to be trying to scope that out themselves? Are they sitting down with us to try to figure out sports fields, parks, irrigation? There's a lot to it, I know, but I'm just...
This will be to set up the whole system, looking at developments northeast, southwest.
And then is the master transportation plan, is it going to incorporate making sure that we have the right specs and design standards for roundabouts? Is it going to be looking at that?
We'll do that. Go ahead, Leon.
We'll be doing that separately.
Separately?
Yes, I'll be working on that.
But that's not, so the transportation plan does not look into roundabouts?
No, it does not.
Okay, that's the answer. All right. Thank you.
And Leon, when we have a final plan, if you could bring that back to council, we'd like to see it.
Certainly. I think you have two opportunities to look at it, Councilmember.
Thank you. Sorry, Mayor.
That's fine. Any other questions or comments? Motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 6 through 14.
It's been moved by Councilor Rizzo, seconded by Councilor Bradshaw. Bradshaw, we approve Consent Agenda Items numbers 6 through 14. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes, I'd just like to bring up one thing on Consent Number Seven. Received a message from a concerned citizen about the swimming pool and seeing if there may have been some damage from the winter storm to see if this item would be helped to look into it and see if any damages or repairs that need to be done with this be part of it as well, just to reiterate.
Mariana, do you want to answer that?
Mariana Spinella, Parks and Recreation Director. That is correct. Part of this assessment with going inside the wall is to check the plumbing, is to assess the damage from the winter storm as well.
Okay, thank you, because we've been, of course, we didn't have the pool all last year, so I just wanted to make sure that it was completely inspected all the way through so that way it could be opened up. Ready for buddy? Thank you.
All right. Any further questions? Comments? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries six to zero. All right, next up is Agenda Item Number 15. This item's been postponed a few times. An ordinance permitting Chapter 53 zoning of the City of Kyle, Texas to rezone approximately 19.5 acres of land for retail services to multifamily, R-33, for property located at 5492 Kyle Center Drive. This item has an open public hearing, so if there are no objections, I'm going to go ahead and keep that public hearing going. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, we're going to keep it open and postpone?
Yes, sir.
Do you need motions till a date certain, or we just bring it back? Because it's got the public hearing going, probably has to be.
Yeah, to the April 6th.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to postpone until the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
Okay.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilor Rizzo. Is there any discussion on the motion?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries six to zero. Next up, Agenda Item Number 16. Second reading, an ordinance permitting Chapter 53 zoning for the City of Kyle, Texas for the purpose of assigning original zoning to approximately 29.8 acres of land from agricultural to single-family residential, R-13, for property located at southeast of Lehman Road and south of Lehman High School. This item's been postponed as well. Is that going to be the same recommendation here? It doesn't have a public hearing, so do you need a motion and bring it back?
Yep, Paige, I'm going to look at you. Same thing, right? Just leap it up until next council meeting.
Mayor and Council, yeah, Mayor and Council, Paige, thanks for the record. You should motion and vote to keep the public hearing open until the next city council meeting or such other date as you determine appropriate.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to postpone this item until the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by...
This is, uh, favorite, Ron Holmes. Can I?
Yeah, go ahead, Tyler.
Can I ask why it's being postponed again?
Do you have any answer you want to take that, Scott?
Sure.
I think we're still working on some of the language.
For the agreements that have been going back and forth over the last few days?
Yes, sir. For the amendment. Correct.
And is this only for the zoning, and are we going to move forward with the other item, the 97-acre development agreement amendment?
They'll come, Tyler, they'll come forward at the same time at the next council meeting.
So everything's being postponed?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. Let the record reflect, Mayor Protimoret Coach is absent. I mean, is present, sorry. Sorry. All right, next up, Agenda Item Number 17. A resolution of the City of Kyle renaming the entirety of West RM 150 to Veterans Drive and giving directions to staff for signs to be installed on or near Memorial Day. Staff request this item to come back so that we could give the property owners more notice. They can't start their outreach until we pass this ordinance, so this would be the only action that we would take, though. So if this is the action we want to take to set that in motion, we would need to give that direction, take that vote now, or if we wanted to go a different direction...
Yeah. And Mayor, this will be a resolution to make this happen, but it does have a public hearing that accompanies it.
It does have a public hearing attached, yes. So if there are any objections, if there are no objections, I'm going to do a public hearing, but is everybody okay with moving forward on this item? All right, so there is a public hearing, so if there are no objections, I'm going to go and open the public hearing. It is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this? No one online as well, correct? All right, so with no objections, I'm going to close the public hearing. It is now closed. So this is similar to the very first vote. It's, resolution's not required by ordinance, so it does not require a 7-0 vote. It only requires a simple majority to rename a road. It does not have to come back for second reading, so if we wanted to take the affirmative vote, we could go ahead and put the nail on this one and then just plan on changing the street signs in or near Memorial Day. I think we're still working on the details of that.
Correct. Samantha, do you want to talk about that just briefly, the plan?
Samantha Armbruster, Director of Communications. Yes, that is the intent, that we would, after this vote, we would put everything in a motion with the notifications, the production of the signs, and then planning for that event and the unveiling of the signs themselves and the installation.
Okay. Councilor Allison.
My question was an inquiry of staff to if we've had any businesses along 150 that have reached out about the funds that we set aside to assist with the hardships that they might have with the renaming of the road.
Again, Samantha Armbruster, I have not received any, nor have I heard from Steve Clamens, who served as a staff liaison for the committee, from any inquiries, from any residents or businesses along that road.
I have a question. Sorry. So how are we going to allocate that money? Are they going to have to, like, request it? Are we going to give a certain amount to certain people? What is that process going to look like?
So the committee wasn't specifically tasked with that duty of figuring out how those funds were assigned. That was something that council had said we would have these funds set aside. At this point, we can go back and have something that's more staff-recommended, or if the council chose to, you know, give us direction, we could do that as well. But at this point, we have the funds, but there hasn't been a recommendation or direction given on how they would be allocated.
But we did allocate $5,000?
Yeah.
It was $5,000 on the nose?
No.
It was...
Yeah, it was a little over $5,000.
It was like some number that we rounded. We saw the money and we just put it in that bucket. You know, one simple way to do it might be to just say, applications for reimbursable expenses are open from one window to the next. This is the total amount. Get them all in, and then you have, you can decide basically how to divvy it all out. It may not even be $5,000 worth, so... But then if it's more, you haven't said yes to anyone. You can get all the applications in front of you and then say, we're going to give, this is how much you're going to get of this pot, essentially. And then everybody who can, who would apply would probably get at least something.
Yeah, and give it a deadline.
Just wouldn't want it to all go to Sonic because they've got a big fancy digital sign or there's like an apartment complex or whatever, you know? But if they wanted to rebrand...
Is there a way that we can get notification out to those? Since it's such a specific area, like you can hand out flyers or like B Pro Act, maybe postcards?
Right.
To make sure everybody got it? Because sometimes a lot of people don't apply for that stuff just because they don't know.
Right. Well, and the good news is because we haven't been given that direction yet, we haven't done the notifications, so all of that can happen at the same time if that's the will of the council.
Well, you could certainly use some of those monies to, I mean, it's like a dozen businesses, right? So you could send out a letter or mailer to them.
Right. They're going to be getting mail anyway and notifying them of the change, so we can include an application or information about it in that notification.
Maybe, I'm thinking, not trying to be specific, but maybe a postcard, because a lot of people, if they get their mail, they just toss it into the spam or they think they're going to throw it away, and I hate to do that, so... But yeah, something that's going to be easier, accessible for them, maybe with a website on it so they can have somewhere to link on. Make it as easy as possible for the people who are just probably a little bit frustrated, just ease it up.
Absolutely.
We could give that direction in this motion as well.
Mm-hmm.
So I could take a stab at a motion if y'all want. All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 17 and give staff direction to use the resources we've allocated to create the program, as had been discussed, for assisting businesses in particular who will be affected, and to set a window and communicate with staff, or communicate with those businesses via whatever medium you determine is best to make sure that all the businesses are contacted ahead of the application and informed of that.
And just for clarification, this would be a reimbursement, and they would apply, and then we would approve the applications based on how many, how much was applied for and the vote of the council?
Yes, the motion is, well, I would say based on the task force that was initially set out, so that way he doesn't have to come to council.
Okay.
So that would be you and Mr. Clamens who'd be able to take care of that with staff support.
Got it. Thank you.
So that's it. We have a motion on the floor. Sorry it was long-winded.
Second?
All right, it's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Bradshaw. It's their discussion on the motion. But to be clear, the point is to say, you're authorized to go ahead and send those mailers out to the businesses. That's what we want, to contact them now as soon as we can.
Absolutely.
Councilor Rizzo.
Just wanted to remind everyone that, you know, there was a committee put together of the citizens of this town, and they did an excellent job. They did the research, and this was, the renaming of this road was a complete, you know, recommendation by the citizens of this city, and I think they did a great job, and I just want to thank them for giving of their time to do this, and I'm glad that this was a total citizen effort at the end, and it led us to where we are now today, and I'm glad with moving forward with this vote. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero, and so concludes the last time Fahita Drive will ever be before the city council. It only took twenty meetings. We have, we have reached the terminus. Well done. Um, all right, well, uh, so it's seven fifty-five and I think we're finished, so I'm, I need to take up at least six minutes worth of airtime here, right?
City manager report.
City manager's report, all right.
How's that fair time?
How about, if it's you, though, you only have four minutes, so.
I can do it. Time me. Okay. And the clock starts. Okay. Uh, Great Texas River Cleanup. We had a great response. It was March sixth. You can see the time there and some of the items that were collected, television. There were almost seventeen hundred pounds of trash collected, eighty-eight volunteers, two council members, six hundred sixty pounds of recyclables, eleven tires, one commercial tire, uh, TV's on it twice, and volunteers are on it twice. Sorry about that. The most interesting item, animal hide. And then we did install a couple of no dumping signs because of that. So anyway, thank you all, and I'm guessing you're going to want to talk about this so it doesn't come, cut into my time. Any council member want to mention anything? See, I knew it. Right there. Go for it.
I just wanted to thank all the staff and everybody and all the citizens that came